Westminster Woods on Julington Creek to order. I am really not Kathy Van der Vliet. She is joining us by Zoom today. I'm Joan Hodges, Vice President of the Association, who will be filling in for Kathy today. The thing that we do at our Residence Association meeting is we remember and thank and praise. We remember and praise those who have gone before us, and we thank all the dedicated employees and volunteers who care for us so lovingly and carefully here at Westminster Woods. Please let us call on Chaplain Leslie McCarrick for remembrance and prayer.
All right, now I don't have to holler as loud. If you all would bow your heads in prayer with me this afternoon. A Lord of all creation who creates still and who is constantly in motion in the world, we come into your presence thankful for the gift of this day and for our individual relationships with you as well as our corporate relationship with you. You are all around us, and though we may seem to be insignificant in relationship to the world, you see each of us and you desire the best for everyone. It is in that spirit of goodness that we come to this Town Hall meeting. Be with the leadership, the council, and the residents as they lift up topics of importance. Help them make decisions in wise and generous ways and protect us all on this day and all of our days. It is in the name of the One with many names that we pray. Amen. I've been asked to share the names of those who now reside in our hearts instead of in our physical presence since November, between November and this month, January. And so for these people, let us pause and give thought to how they impacted our lives and how precious each one had been for us. Teresa Gankers, Helen Paget, June Holland, Beryl Weeks, Sharon Connor, Cheryl Feeney, Rita Glover, John Harris, Doris Hayes, Marion Smith, Dorothy Noble, Anna Wilson, Wayne Goodson, Carol Faust, Marybel Elliott, and friend to all, our staff maintenance person, Mike Lake. Thank you.
May we have the Secretary's report from Gretchen Harris.
The scheduled Town Hall meeting for October 28, 2020 was conducted in person and by video recording. The minutes for the meeting were approved, published on MyW Life, and posted on all community bulletin boards. There were no corrections to the minutes, so the minutes will stand as published in all those places.
May we have the Treasurer's report from Elizabeth Ray.
Good afternoon. It has been a very slow year. My biggest jobs this year so far, what, nine months already, have been the Employee Christmas Fund, which we are now finished with, and the Employee Scholarship Fund, which I'll just be quiet about that because we have Elaine here today to tell you all about everything wonderful they do. The boutique unfortunately is far behind in sales compliments of COVID. And unfortunately, my projections say that we will, while we have enough to continue with rewarding our wonderful employees each quarter, our donation to the benevolent fund this year is probably going to be less than 20% what it was last year. And that is primarily because we were closed for six months. So that's all there is. The report does get posted every month on the Residence Council folder under MyW Life. I have about a half a dozen hard copies if some of you actually want to feel the paper and look at it. And if I run out of those, just let me know. I'll be happy to get you a personal copy. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Now for the presentation of the Employees of the Quarter. First, we'll call on the Dining Services Committee Chair, Wayne Sims.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a delight always on behalf of Dining Services to present the awards because these people are the people that just sort of keep us all going because the Army travels on its stomach, and we're an Army, and we need to keep traveling, and they do a great job of doing it. We don't have both of our employees here because one of them is working. The other one is able to finish up and just get here. So we're delighted to introduce them to you. I made a few notes since Wayne, the erudite other Wayne, always shows me up with his fine remarks. And it won't take me but 45 minutes or so. First of all, we have a man who joined us two years ago. Been marvelous in the way he's accepted his responsibilities. He technically was a part-time server through the summer. He started working in a variety of ways with the oncoming of the COVID-19. He does a regular breakfast server normally. He's involved in so many things. He's really what you call Johnny on the spot. And it's the key to making this group of people who serve us work because he can pick up almost any element of dining services and performing for us. And as his boss man says, he does it all with great attitude. And so it is with pleasure that we announce that one of the recipients of Dining Services Employee of the Quarter Award is Erin Alvarado. The other recipient has been with us a little longer. In fact, she's in her 22nd year with us at Westminster, and they've all been blessed years. She has a name, but she has a nickname that everyone knows. Everyone who goes to the dining room knows because she's that kind of person, a true champion. She used to set the buffet and then serve. But you know what she does nowadays? She starts taking orders. She starts preparing takeout meals for some 30 to 40 people a day. And many times, just like her boss man, you'll see her in a cart delivering those takeout meals to residents all around the campus. She has a routine that includes preparing food, working with the kitchen. She is really one of those "we couldn't do without her" type persons. Coming up, young lady. I want to quote what your boss says as she comes up. David said to me, "We are truly blessed to have Nay on our team." And I know that she makes a difference in the lives of all of our residents. And that's what it's all about. Rundelin Nay Robinson, and everybody knows her as Nay, a smiling face, a beautiful young lady, even though she's got 22 years here almost. We're delighted to present you with a certificate, the pen, and the check as one of our Employees of the Quarter. Thank you very much, Nay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
The next awards will be Health Services Committee with Wayne Letizia.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Executive. The Health Services Committee is always pleased to present each quarter five awards. And the reason that we take such a large number of awards is because we have the largest number of employees here at Westminster Woods. The fourth quarter of each year, the Health Services Committee honors our Certified Nurses' Aids, our CNAs. As indicated by their title, the CNAs are certified by the State of Florida, and this certification allows them to provide direct patient care. This certification occurs only after the individual has undergone training on the care and has passed a test. WWJC has begun offering courses to provide training, and we hope to be able to resume those trainings when we're able to meet in person again. We value our CNAs highly at Westminster Woods because they provide, under the direction of our nurses, the basics and the bulk of direct patient care. We could not maintain our five-star Medicare rating without the care and dedication they provide. We are very happy to recognize the following people. And I will ask Valorie Fitzky to come forward. Valorie is from the Health Care Center, and Kristi Henderson from Assisted Living. And these are two of our CNAs whom we are honoring. Thank you very much for your service to us. Let's give them another round of applause, please. The other three honorees, one of whom is Marie Saint Jean, and she is currently on quarantine from being exposed to this terrible virus. The other two, Sharon Swabi Morgan and Holly Ray, are working in the Admission Transfer Unit and cannot leave once they get there. They're locked in. No, not really locked in, but that is part of the protocol is that when they arrive in the morning, they need to change from their street clothes into their scrubs, and they stay in the ATU until they go home. And that is to try to keep this virus out of WWJC. So I thank you all for allowing me to speak today. It's always a hard time to follow Wayne Sims on the program. But I thank you all for your attention.
Next, we'll have Maintenance, Housekeeping, Security Committee, and Dave Dingfield is the Chair.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be assigned as the Chair of the Housekeeping Committee, well, Maintenance, Housekeeping, and Security Committee. And I'd like to introduce our employee, come on up, please, of the Quarter, Marcella Nickens. Many of you have seen her around here. She was hired in August of 2019, which many of you remember Hurricane Dorian was just out a little bit into the Atlantic. And her first day of work was our day of evacuation. So she had quite an experience enjoying getting started here. She has been down here about five years from Massachusetts is where she was raised. And her time here, she spent a lot of time with Ana Cortez and learning how the ropes, so to speak, of being in housekeeping here. So we're glad that she stuck it out despite the hurricane. And we want to congratulate Marcella on her Employee Award for fourth quarter of last year. Thank you. Next, we have a very familiar face to most of you from the Maintenance Department, Dennis Smith. Been here just a mere 12 years now. But this is his sixth time of getting an Employee Quarterly Award winner, which is quite an honor, I think, on his part. He is a graduate, and we'll hear from Elaine in just a little bit, a graduate of what used to be called the Employee Resident Scholarship, and took that opportunity to become trained in HBAC. So if your air conditioner or heating unit goes out, this is the man that comes there. He's not always smiling, and he's not always happy, but he'll come to your unit. One of the other things about Dennis is his son took advantage of that same program, and he went through the fireman training. And then has been doing that a couple years and is now going through the police academy. And he's moving on into that area of contributing to our town. He has a daughter also who just recently got married. And he has two grandchildren that just light up his life. So Dennis loves fishing. He loves outdoors, and he says he loves residence. So we want to give him a big thank you for his many years of service to us. Thank you, Dennis.
Next, we have Residence Lifestyle Committee with Bill Tally.
I think we're going to have a little bit of a show here this afternoon. Nick Burvey. I'm supposed to swallow it? You're telling me? Okay. Nick Burvey is our Employee of the Quarter for Resident Lifestyle. And Nick is on one of his runs with a... Hey, Nick, pay attention to the road. He's on a run with one of our residents to doctor's appointment. That's one of the things that he does. And does everything so graciously. He was born in New York, one of nine kids, married, two kids, two German Shepherds. He and his wife spent two years, I think it was, in Alaska. She didn't like the cold, so they came to Florida, and he's been with us since they got here. It's a real pleasure, Nick, to award you with the Employee of the Quarter for Resident... Put your mask back on. Resident Lifestyle, so I can see him and he can see me.
Next, it's the presentation of the Volunteer of the Quarter, and we're going to ask Pam Benford, Director of Volunteers, to present the award.
My, how far we've come. Remember when we didn't know what Zoom was? I am so impressed with all of us. I think we all deserve a round of applause for our technological growth this pandemic. Thank you, everybody. I've made a little agreement with our honoree this afternoon because she has told me many, many times that if we ever did this to her, she would not talk to me. She's just somebody who's very humble and doesn't like to be up in front of crowds. So we're not going to ask her to do that today. But it is important to recognize the person who is referred to as the Energizer Bunny, Miss Sunshine, the official hostess, and just the all-over caretaker of her friends and neighbors, primarily over in Magnolia. So our honoree this quarter is Ms. Marcy Ashby. Absolutely. And Marcy is the kind of person that doesn't wait for you to say, "I have a question," or "I need something." She wants to make sure that she's meeting those needs and answering those questions before you even know you have them. So I don't know if you've noticed, but she's great at taking notes in everything she goes to. She doesn't keep that to herself. She goes back and makes sure that other people know what's going on. And especially in this past year, those efforts have been just absolutely essential and just it means so much to your friends and neighbors here and to the staff members here that you're supporting us in all those programs. So join me again in congratulating Marcy, and I will bring this to her as we plan.
We will now move on to Committee Reports. The Employee Scholarship Committee, Elaine Galaski.
Since I don't have anyone joining me up here, I'm going to take off my mask so you can hear me a little better. 2020 was a year we certainly didn't plan for. And when I spoke at the January 2020 Town Hall, I had no idea what we were in for, and I bet you didn't either. All the change and disruption in our lives in the months between March and December, all the events that didn't happen, all the concern and even fear that surrounded us. One of the things that kept so many of the negatives at bay was the presence of our WWJC team members who did their best to keep things going under new and often confusing circumstances. Like those team members, the Employee Scholarship Committee did its best to keep going despite so many changes. And we did. We even had a great year, awarding nearly $42,000 in 23 separate scholarships, 11 to team members and 12 to children of team members. That's a new record in terms of dollar amount awarded. Please give yourselves a hand. Those of you who've heard me give our annual update before know that I usually bring some scholarship recipients with me. Since space limitations keep that from happening this year, I'm going to do things a little differently. And you have met some Employee Scholarship winners already, so I'm glad that they were here. So today, I bring you greetings from those team members who receive scholarships. As I say their names, I want you to imagine them standing up here next to me. Thank you from Sharon, whose name you've heard a few minutes ago, Dan, Whitney, Weston, Ashley, Sheila, Marcella, whom you just saw, Ansley, Kayla, and Jaisha. Their smiling faces indicate their gratitude for your support of their education at colleges including St. John's River State College, Florida State College at Jacksonville, and Jersey College. Their majors include criminal justice, nursing, and organizational management. Some of the other team members standing here are studying for their CNA or LPN or medical assistance certifications or their phlebotomy credential. And we'll let those team members leave us. And now I want you to meet the 12 children of team members who receive scholarships for their education. Say hello to Nicole and Daniel, Natalia and Aubrey, Gabriella and Graham, Grace and Davis, September and Alexis, and Joshua and Anna. They are attending St. John's River State College, Tallahassee Community College, the University of North Florida, Auburn University, the University of Tennessee, the University of South Florida, Florida State College at Jacksonville, and Florida State University. Each of these young ones, thank you. And what do all these names represent? They represent people and lives and educational goals and hope for change and belief in oneself and a desire to be an example to one's children and dreams for a better future. And what does this have to do with you? It has everything to do with you as you are the ones who make this program possible, whose contributions make the WWJC Scholarship Program one of the best among the CCRCs in the Westminster organization, who acknowledge that our lives in this place are directly affected by, and in many cases dependent on, the dedication, professionalism, and concern of our team members. As residents, we can express our gratitude to team members by our contributions to the Christmas Fund, the Mercy Fund, with a care and crisis campaign. And the Employee Scholarship Fund presents you with another chance, one that meets our team members at the intersection of their goals and the reality of their resources. We all know how expensive education is, and our gifts to the Scholarship Fund reflect our awareness that paying for education and training is a struggle for most families, especially for those who, like the majority of our team members, are in service jobs. Several of our scholarships this year were for less than $500 as team members took what many of them called "baby steps" toward their dreams. I'm sure you can imagine what it might feel like. You haven't been in school for years while you raised your children or cared for your parents, and your work experience is in lower-wage professions like caregiving and housekeeping. If you are that person, then going back to school can be daunting even to consider, let alone to pay for. So taking a training class in a medical field is a small step that can pave the way for bigger steps once the team member learns to see in him or herself what we on the Scholarship Committee see in them, people with life experience that has made them tougher than they know and work experience that has prepared them to cope with emergencies and life-threatening situations. What's a test compared to that? Your contributions to the Employee Scholarship Fund change lives. Your gifts encourage team members to dream new dreams. This fund provides team members' children with a financial boost as they begin to work toward their own dreams. Those of us on the committee hear these stories and know how significant and how affirming receiving a scholarship can be. And a brief sidebar, we're always looking for new faces on our committee, so if you'd like to get involved and meet these amazing team members and their children, please contact me. Will you help us make 2021 another great year for our WWJC Scholarship Program? You will be receiving our campaign letter in your mailbox shortly. And all of us on the committee hope you will choose to say yes to our request. Every gift matters, and there are many ways you can make your tax-deductible contribution. John Dewey said, "Education is not preparation for life; education is life itself." Let's encourage our team members' growth in their own life journeys by supporting the WWJC Employee Scholarship Fund.
Thank you, Elaine, and congratulations to all the scholarship winners. And please remember it's time to write those checks again to support our employees. The next committee is the Election Committee, Elizabeth Ray.
Hello again. As you're well aware, our fiscal year runs from April 1st through March 31st. And that is also how long the terms of your council membership lasts. We have six of our 10 team members being termed out this year. So we are looking to fill six positions on council. We have three vacancies available for people in the garden apartments to represent their neighbors, two for the East Woodcreek Side neighborhood, and one for North Point Magnolia. We are accepting applications to council until the 5th of February. Elections will commence the following Friday for a week. I encourage everyone to consider nominating themselves or a neighbor with that neighbor's permission. And if you ask yourself, "What do I have to offer?" I only have two questions for you. Do you live here? Do you care about what happens here on this campus? If your answer to those two questions is yes, you need to consider stepping up for yourself and your neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We need some council members. Next, I'm going to ask Wayne Letizia to give a report from the Health Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have some good news. Well, it's not really new. It's two weeks old, and that is that the vaccine is here. And the good news of that, yes, yes, finally. And as the executive director may be reporting in his remarks, 92% of our independent living residents have been vaccinated receiving their first dose. And that is just phenomenal. And in addition, I know that there have been other residents who have received their first dose at their doctor's offices. So we are really closing in on herd immunity here, at least among our residents, and that is wonderful. But it's not here yet. We've not received our second dose, and the full effect of the vaccine is not apparent for probably about six weeks after receiving the second dose. So as you've heard already this morning or this afternoon from Bill, put on your mask. Keep wearing your masks. It is so imperative that you wear your masks inside and even outdoors, because what we have transmitting this virus is an aerosol. And an aerosol, although we can't smell it, is like cigarette smoke that you can smell after a person has gone by and they've left this trail behind them. And the same thing can happen with this virus even outdoors. So I really want to stress how important it is to continue with our masks. In fact, I heard on the radio this morning, they're even recommending wearing double masks, a surgical mask over or under a cloth mask, and how that gives even greater protection. It protects the wearer, and it protects the person the wearer is coming in contact with. So I want to just emphasize, please wear your masks. Thank you. Before the Health Services Committee is finished, I want to ask David Dingfield to give a report about emergency medical information packets that he is preparing, that his committee is preparing.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, Wayne. Is it working? EMI. Somebody give heart about EMI, and Wayne, this is not working? EMI, the Emergency Medical Information Project that we have been working on as a part of Health Services Committee assignment for independent living residents. It is currently underway. Some of you have seen these pink envelopes around. We're trying to make it startling for you. And EMI was designed, developed by residents, by medical services, by maintenance and security, and by, and including our county emergency services personnel. So we pass that design on through the residents' council and through WWJC leadership. We're going to have a more, much more detailed explanation coming up at residents' council, but it's already unfolding, so to speak, in a number of areas. People are getting this, and what we're trying to do is, we found out less than half of you use the old yellow card on your refrigerator. So what we're doing here is making, part of this is for you and me, and you're going to have responsibility of filling it out. Part of it is for the EMTs. When they come, there'll be information in the packet. And the third one is, if you go to the hospital, the hospital will have the information, so they're not going to be bugging you about it. So responsibility is yours, and you'll get more information about it if you haven't already, but I know it's being dispersed around the neighborhoods. EMI, and if you've got questions, ask any of us on Health Services Committee. Joan and myself and Walt Brinkman have kind of been the project team on it. We're glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Let's see. I think other committees, Bill Snell, I think you had a brief report from Florida Life Care Residents Association.
Yes, we are. Hey, greetings all. For those who don't know me, my name is Bill Snell, and I've recently been elected as the president of FLYCRA. And some of you may or may not know what FLYCRA is. It's the Florida Life Care Resident Association. And as such, we've been busy behind the scenes to a certain degree, and I thought maybe I'd give you a little update of what's happening, although I was told today that I've got about one minute to do this. One of the things we've done, I've decided that we had a membership issue, that we wanted to increase it, and the board elected to go ahead and form a membership committee, or actually, a recruiting committee. It is headed by Mike Williams at this point. And I'd like to point out and say thank you to him, because he's been very effective about it, in that the committee, he and the committee, have recruited over 30 new members, and they continue to be active. And I think that's a very major accomplishment for him. And that brings up our membership total of our residents, our independent living residents, to over a half of you. So right now, you could look around to a person next to you or across from you, and either you are a member or that person is a member. We have that many here. We don't call ourselves a committee, but we certainly represent a large portion of the community that's here. Moving on to a certain degree, looking out to the future, we haven't had an opportunity, when I say "we," we as the board, haven't had an opportunity to talk with many of you, let you know what's happening. And of course, one of the biggest reasons for that is our COVID issue that's been going on for virtually a year now. Normally, we have a meeting about once a year where we, you may have attended some of the past wine and cheese events, where actually it was a combination of sharing news with our membership and also recruiting new members. We haven't been able to have that now for over a year, but we're looking forward to the time when AC comes after COVID, that we can actually get together again. And we're looking at possibly getting somebody out from our headquarters out in Tallahassee and come and give us a little bit of an idea of what goes on behind the scenes, and particularly how the lobbyist is working in the background, actually in the foreground, which is the main thrust of what we do. I'm sure my time has already run out, but she hasn't put the hook on me yet. I just leave you with the old adage dealing with politics is, the story is usually, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And we have an individual or individuals at the table, and that's really what our organization is all about. FLYCRA, as you probably know, is the only organization in the state of Florida which represents you as the residents of a CCRC. I thank you.
I just hate to be the timekeeper. Are there any other committees that wish to give a brief report? And if not, we are saving our time for Brian, our executive director, Brian Tenney, who's going to be the star of our show today.
Well, I don't know if I can be the star following some of these committee chairs and their recognition of the team members, but thank you, Madam Vice President, council members, and also all of you committee chair people. Congratulations to the team members and the resident volunteer that were all recognized as volunteers and team members of the year, or of the quarter. And today, we're going to have a few updates from a few other people. I also want to thank the Health Services Committee and Walt Brinkman and Dave Dingfield and Joan Hodges for their thorough investigation and comprehensive emergency medical information packet that has been put together. And I know that they've started to share that with residents and team captains in the community, and we're proud to be partnering with you on this system that should be more widely used than the previous system that we had here on campus. So this week is Activities Professionals Week, and we are recognizing all 12 of our activity professionals in all the different levels of care. We can't function, this community, and provide the services that we provide without everybody being a part of the team. And we are very proud to have the Resident Lifestyle Team here on our campus, and each department takes a day to show their appreciation to them. And when you have the opportunity and you see our Resident Lifestyle professionals, please thank them for the services that they provide here on our campus. And with that, I'm going to ask Laura Stanfield to come on up, Staten, to come up and give us an update on what's happening with our events in February.
Do you know how much there is to celebrate in February? There's Valentine's Day, there's President's Day, there's National Black History Month, there's Super Bowl, and there's Lent. And oh, wait a minute, before Lent is what? Fat Tuesday. We have, and we have a calendar full of fun stuff, considering our limitations. I think it's going to work out pretty good. Just bear in mind, we're still taking sign-ups for anything that meets indoors in a room, anywhere. Make sure and get signed up. In February, the first Saturday in February is what, Betty Francis?
International.
Yes. It's my granddaughter's favorite day. So David will make sure that ice cream and all the sprinkles and stuff are available on the 6th when you go into the dining room for breakfast. The 7th is Super Bowl. There's nothing in the newsletter about that yet, but David and I are working on it. We will celebrate in one way or another that football game. It's too bad it's not basketball. That's something I can get into. Anyway, also, Resident Lifestyle not only works for your events, but we work with each other, like David and I. And then there's the chaplain. Guess what she and I have worked up? Ann Arneson.
Renewal of your wedding vows.
Renewal of your wedding vows, and that's going to be Thursday, the 11th, at 3:00 out here in the gazebo, wherever the gazebo is. And so far, we already have two couples signed up, so we're real excited. I think Wayne and Susan Latisia are here to say how special that is, because we did that, how long ago? Four, five years?
2016.
In 2016? So it's time. On Friday, the 12th, Jerry Jo will be hosting a Healthy Heart Walk to resemble a lot of the other walks that she's had out here. That's something else we celebrate in February. It's Healthy Heart Month. And on the 13th, this is a newish holiday, February 13th. Anybody know what that is? It is Galentine's Day. Galentine's Day is the day we celebrate our gal friends amongst all of us girlfriends. It was coined by the Parks and Recreation Show when Amy Poehler was in it. She kind of discovered this holiday, and it took off, and it truly is a day. So on the 13th, at breakfast time, at 9:00, we are going to have a Galentine's celebration with waffles and mimosas. Yeah, right? So please sign up for that. Space is limited, but I think it'll be a fun time. It'll be our first-ever celebration of Galentine's, and I am sorry, but there will be no men at this one. Valentine's Day happens to be on a Sunday, and I have two violinists that are going to come, and they're going to play at the gazebo, and we're going to have some chocolate stations set up along the way, and chairs will be set up. So that'll be in the evening, between 5:30 and 6:30 on Sunday, the 14th. The time is early, but that's okay, because you'll be having, David's having a three-seated lunch that day for Valentine's Day. So that evening, since he doesn't serve dinner, I didn't feel like 5:30 was too bad of a time. So yeah, I think that you can sign up for that and enjoy that one. It's not necessarily lover's lane, but that's sort of what we're calling it. Then the 16th is Tuesday, and it's Fat Tuesday. And David will be having a Fat Tuesday breakfast in the morning and a Mardi Gras dinner that night. Don't forget to wear all those loud, tacky clothes. On the 17th is Ash Wednesday, and Leslie will have the imposition of ashes at 6:45 a.m. to 9 a.m., and then again at 2:30 to 3:30. And then at 4:00, she will have an Ash Wednesday service. On the 18th, we have a Healthy Heart seated volleyball game, which apparently has been requested, and Jerry Jo has added that to the calendar. And other than the eat-out or order-out-and-eat-in and the Tuesday matinees, that pretty much covers everything, except we do have all that virtual entertainment. I have sprinkled in there several things already for Black History Month, and of course, there'll be some other things. You never know what you're going to get until you turn your TV on that morning. But please join us, and we are excited to be able to do more than what we've normally done. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. 2020 was a year where we had to do things differently, but I want to recognize Laura, she's been the mastermind behind a lot of these new, fresh ideas that we've had, which to also include Galentine's Day, and I appreciate you being here to explain that so that when people saw that on the calendar, they knew that what you were talking about. And I hope you all have a wonderful time. Next, I want to invite Rod Jordan to come on up. He's going to give us an update on the grounds and the whole campus.
Good afternoon, everyone. How are you all doing today? All right, the old lift station. When we abandoned that lift station several months ago, it was about a quarter of the way filled. And during the redevelopment committee and some other committees, it was brought up that this was a good opportunity to do some landscaping at what we call the Four Corners. So I decided to open that lift station up and see what it would take to abandon it, and it was almost full. So we believe that, and it was full of sand and mud, and it was almost impossible to pump out. So we had to jump on that and request an emergency project request from corporate to get on that and permanently abandon that. And there are certain steps that we're going to have to take to do that, but one of the things was, the old sanitary pipe system must have been collapsed when we had those big, heavy caterpillars and stuff back there, and we felt that the storm water was coming in there, and that between the storm water, sand, and mud, that's what was filling it up. So what we're going to do is, we're going to get that capped with the inlet, make sure the inlet is sealed up, and then once the inlet's sealed up, we're going to go ahead and abandon that the way that county wants us to abandon a lift station. So just wanted to let you know, you're going to be seeing a lot of work there, and then once we get the work done, we're going to take a bench, make sure we put a bench there and landscape that area a little bit better. And also, there was a lighting issue that was brought up in there, and we're going to deal with that lighting issue then also. Speaking of lighting issues, along Linger Longer Lane, we have, between B and C, replaced all the old lights with LEDs. They all come on individually. They're all triggered by light sensors. And then all the way down Linger Longer Lane from all the lounges, we had a switch that would actually turn on or off the light that would be outside, and it was actually shining on Linger Longer Lane. And we realized that what we needed to do was make that always powered, but then put it on a light sensor. So from K all the way down to A, we now have that outside light, the globe light, on a light sensor, so it's going to make sure it comes on during low light and then go off when it's, the light is bright again. So that's going to happen, and then all of our motion lights are down along the way. Since we do have Secure America, an outside Since we do have Secure America, an outside service contract with security, it's hard for us to put together a program or get them trained to the point where they're going to let us know what lights are burnt out and what lights aren't. So right now, we have a person that's going to come in once a week and look at all the lighting on the campus, especially main campus, to make sure we can tag all the lights that aren't working. In addition to that, on the main campus, we've realized that we have some very low-light areas on the main campus, especially in front of administration. Well, it used to be old administration, which is now the Lifestyle Resource Building. So American Electrical is doing a lighting assessment for us, but in the interim, we have asked them to give us a proposal to add approximately eight more lights to the main campus, which basically stretched from where the C building is on the museum side all the way back over to where the generator is, and then from the generator up where we go back to a single-lane road on the main road. So we're looking at putting lighting there also. Natural gas. Finally. We didn't know what was happening with the natural gas with Sawyer coming in, but it had to deal with us providing authorization for them to ease onto our property. So we made sure we got an easement contract with them completed. It's in for permitting, and hopefully we see some action where the natural gas is going to come in right over by where the dining, main kitchen is at, and over there by RRU. It'll, they'll core-bore in from State Road 13. It'll come into Substation 8 there, and then the entire property will be on natural gas instead of propane. And if anyone knows the difference, we're going to be saving a tremendous amount of money because of the price difference between propane and natural gas. There are two projects that we want to get completed, but those are going to be doing the new walkways and possibly planning the doors at the Magnolia Apartments and the North Point Apartments. Those exterior walkways, all four levels at Magnolia, and the two levels at North Point, we want to get those floors resealed and put stain and acrylic sealer over it that's not going to let it turn black right after you pressure wash it because of rubber wheels and other things, and dirt and grime won't be able to stick to it, and they're easy to clean. So I'm going to have a little, I've got the company that I want to do the work, but before I put the request in to Brian, I wanted to make sure they gave me a little sample area so everyone will be able to, I can tell you that, hey, go to Magnolia, first floor, north side, you'll see a little sample area, that's the way the floor is going to look. So that's about, oh, that's about all I had on that. Secure America. We've been having difficulties with our contract with Secure America. Most of it has been hiring difficulties they've had on staffing. They cannot seem to staff as they promised they would. Brian and I had a meeting with them and basically gave them a 30-day notice. As we were giving them their 30-day notice, they told us that they had been bought out by Allied, which is another security company and one that we interviewed months ago, but we decided to go with Secure America. Well, Allied has a big presence here in the Jacksonville area, and they feel very, very comfortable that between Secure America and Allied, that by February 21st, they can have it totally all together and have staffing to a point where they're going to give us that consistency that we originally wanted from them in the first place. Permanent first shift, permanent second shift, permanent third shift, and then a weekend permanent person also. So we had the consistency so the residents knew who they were getting every day, every shift. So hopefully, they can make that happen. If not, then we'll pick up the ball on February 21st and continue to march from there. Micromain. Probably a strange word for everybody here, but Micromain is our automated work order system. And I have been trying for the last four years to become paperless. I even tried to get a different automated work order system, but corporate has a lot of time invested in this one, and so do we. The historical events that we have, the chronological, the assets, everything on this property is already in this Micromain system. Well, Micromain has given us the opportunity to update its program to become paperless. That means all of my guys can have an iPad, and as they go past the place that have Wi-Fi, their work orders download, and the work orders come back to the maintenance shop, the ones that they've already closed out. So we volunteered to be the beta source for them to try this. They wanted to try it, one community on the north, and then one down in the Tampa area. And because I know Nell keeps that system up so well, and we use it so much, that I felt that we would be a good choice to volunteer to do the beta testing on that. So just wanted to let you all know that this system is really good, too, because we're going to be able to keep track of how many light bulbs we used on a work order. All of the material that we use for a work order can be in that, and it's automatically going to get us a new order. Here's what you used this week, here's what you need to order. So we're really happy, and I hope that this system works for us. Any questions about maintenance? Mr. Tally. I don't see why we can't, sir. The question was, can we name that bench that we're going to put over there by the old damn, the Rod Jordan Throne? So I think it's apropos. I like it. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Letizia. Landscaping has been taken out in front of the K gate and all of the front portion of Southwood. It is being replaced. Yes, we're taking it all out. We're making sure the irrigation is right, and it's all going to be put back with native Florida stuff. I know that makes Mrs. Letizia happy. It will be put back with all native Florida plants and shrubs, but it will also incorporate the annual and perennial flowers that we want in the front, and that will carry over to where the K gate is also. So we wanted a little more color in there. So that's what we're doing over there, and it should look really good. And if it looks good there, once we get things pretty much to a standard on the main campus, we can bring that over on the main campus also. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
You are not talking to the people in their homes. Here you go.
Thank you. What is to prevent? And I've had this experience twice recently. What is to prevent a worker from saying that a work order is complete when it really isn't? And I can give you two examples if you want them.
That is a great question. Usually, and I'd be more than happy to talk with you about it on a one-on-one basis, if you would like, but the only thing I can come up with is that they needed something to complete that work order. They brought it back to get orders, to get the material or the equipment ordered for that work order, and somehow it got closed out instead of getting that part ordered, that piece ordered, or whatever they needed, and then back to the individual to come complete the work order for sure. But I'd be more than happy to talk with you, ma'am, on it on a one-on-one basis, and maybe we can figure out what happened and prevent that in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait a minute. Go up to that mic. This is not sanitary. Negotiation you and Brian are doing with the Allied, Security America, whatever that is, I'm assuming that there will be a prerequisite in that, that the permanent employee on security duty after normal hours will be a legitimate emergency medical responder-type person or have at least training to do that?
Sir, yeah. I understand what you're saying, that they will be first aid and CPR certified. Yes, sir. Does that answer your question? No, your name's, you're Ramsey, not Mike. I thought that was funny.
The other weekend, we were standing over here at the parking lot over by North Point and where the buses are parked. About three or four of us stood there and watched a white truck back up to the fence right outside of maintenance. Three young boys jumped over the fence with their fishing rods, walked over to the pond, and explained to us that they were going to go fishing. We told them this was private property, and we did call the security. Security never showed up. If it wasn't for us old ladies running them off, they would still be there probably fishing. So they jumped the fence and went back. I just want to let you know that if these young men can jump the fence to fish, they can jump the fence and steal anything they want to from this property. So we really need to have something done about that, because we stood right there and watched them, and they were very brazen about it.
Thank you, ma'am. And that was brought to my attention, and I will make sure that I talk to the weekend security and maintenance staff to make sure that they respond appropriately. Well, unfortunately, I'm not allowed to hire residents. I'd have a heck of a volunteer staff, I guarantee you there. Any other questions? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Maybe what we can do is get a sign out there that says, "Beware of older adults." Anyways, while Cynthia is getting ready to come up, because I know that you all are very interested in the vaccine and what our progress is and what's next, I thought that I would review with you our percentages of vaccinated people on our campus. You can see that our independent living residents and our health center residents are at 94%. Our assisted living residents are at 98%. And then the team, health center team members are at 58%, and all other team members are at 69%. We do have the opportunity coming up that Cynthia is going to talk about on the 2nd and 3rd for assisted living, independent living, and any other, and team members that got their first doses this past time to get their second doses, which will get us closer to that herd immunity that Wayne was talking about. But I do believe that we will have the opportunity to have some new residents and team members get their first doses this next time. I did ask about essential caregivers. They said that they could not include essential caregivers because of the limited amount of the vaccination that's coming into the state of Florida, but it does sound like they're going to work with us on anybody that still needs a first dose. The other thing that I wanted to share with you, because I can only imagine that people would be concerned that our team members are not getting the vaccination at the same rate as the residents, that we have initiated an incentive for team members who get the vaccination. And that was communicated this week. When they get their second vaccination, they'll get a gift card for $200, and then three months later, they'll get another gift card for $200. So we are trying to incentivize our team members to get the vaccination, as well as education. There's education that's been provided by our Westminster Communities of Florida, as well as education that we're doing with people on a one-on-one basis when they come in and get tested, when we have different meetings with them. So with that, I will turn this over to Cynthia.
Brian, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Can we encourage the residents who got their shots either from their hospital or their doctor to let you know, so you can make that number more accurate for independent living?
Absolutely. Are you getting that information from some? Cynthia says that some people have shared that they have gotten the vaccine outside of the community, and we will encourage people to let us know if they are vaccinated because of the importance of the herd immunity. Cynthia?
Hello. Okay. Who all got their COVID shot? The one. Okay. Great. Yay. All right. So, me, too. So the 2nd and the 3rd, we will be doing the second shots. And for those that want, that didn't get it the last time, want their first shot, we'll also be doing those with a follow-up date to do those people that got their first shots, their second immunizations. You will be receiving in your mailbox, if you've gotten your first shot, actually not in your mailbox, in your door, because I never know when people check their mail. So in your door, you will get the date and time of your next immunization, and that'll be delivered to you by Friday night. So if you see me wandering around at midnight on Friday, you'll know why I'm here. So just wave at me, okay? We're doing great. I mean, Walgreens is doing a great job for us. We'll have the same setup as last time with registration, and yes, you'll have to fill out forms again. So bring your ID and your insurance cards. I know, it's double work, but this is what Walgreens wants, this is what we'll do. And other than that, do you have questions? Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to speak to the people at home?
I'm one of the people who fell through the cracks and didn't get her shot, her first shot. So I'm wondering if there's actually a schedule for us few people to get our first shot on the 2nd, and will we be notified of a time?
Just like everybody else, yes, ma'am. If you have requested that shot, you've called me and spoken to me, you'll get that lovely little note in your mailbox or in your door.
Okay. I've requested it several times, but not officially.
Okay. Did you call me?
I've called you several times.
Okay. You're on my list.
But not at the right time.
Well, there's no time, right time. You are on my list.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, bring your cards you got last time. If you forget it, that's okay, they'll do another one. But if you still have your little white paper or card from your last immunization, bring it with you, and they'll fill out your second dose, which is good. If we ever get to travel again, you'll need it with your passport to prove you've been inoculated. Yes, ma'am. Well, you're welcome. Any other questions? You can always call me if you think of something, all right? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cynthia. I can tell you, you all know John, or many of you know John, the pharmacist over at Walgreens. He said that it went smoother here than anywhere else, and a lot of that had to do with Cynthia's organization. So thank you, Cynthia. Before I go on to more other... Uh, I think that it was up to 36 hours that people might have experienced this, but in doing some other research, I believe that the studies indicate that this is common for younger people to have more of a reaction to the vaccine, the second vaccine than the older people. So I don't know how much we can rely on that, uh, but it, that is information that's out there. There's also a lot of information out there about vitamin D and how it helps with, um, preventing the, the COVID, not that it's going to keep you from getting it, but I guess it helps to fight against it. And, um, I can tell you, I take vitamin D and I don't know if that's why I didn't get any reaction, but I've been telling other, everybody, including my parents, because they're getting ready to get their second vaccine on the 30th, that, um, you know, to maybe, you know, avoid reactions, that maybe that's one way to do it. So I wanted to let you know that. Also, uh, there's been a lot of questions around the, um, people that have been testing positive since we have had, uh, the vaccine. And we've had six employees that have tested positive, uh, this year and one of them was vaccinated and that was the last one that was vaccinated. That person, uh, there, there's a protocol for determining a false positive. And what you do is you test them twice within 24 hours, the first time after 24 hours, get the results back, test again within 24 hours. And if you have two negatives following a positive, it's supposed to be considered a false positive. James City County Department of Health is not recognizing that. Four out of the six people who have tested positive had had two negatives immediately following. So I don't know if they're false positive, they meet the criteria, you know, of a false positive, but we've had to follow the direction of the Department of Health. Uh, so, uh, that's a kind of an update on what we've experienced with our people that have tested positive since the, um, vaccines were administered. All right. So we're in a new year and I thought that I would share some goals that we have for this year, uh, with you all. And I have three goals to talk about today. Uh, one is to meet and exceed our occupancy expectations. The second is to reduce our turnover by 15% and the third is to improve resident satisfaction. So I'm going to talk about each of these and as I talk about them, I'm going to give you a little bit of an update of relevant information that applies to these areas. So independent living and assisted living are both going to be budgeted at 92% occupancy in 2021. Now, this is the fiscal year of 2021 that starts in April of 2021. And the skilled nursing facility is going to be budgeted at 85%. These are favorable numbers for us. We have been operating above 92% in both independent living and assisted living and we've been operating right around the 85% in the skilled nursing. If we look at the, um, national averages, uh, there's three columns here and I'll read them since you might not be able to see them. But this column here is the national averages and then the far column is Westminster Communities of Florida on a whole. So you can see in independent living that, um, the national average is 83.5%, where Westminster Communities of Florida has almost been operating at 92%. Assisted living average is 77.7%. Westminster Communities of Florida has been at 84%. The nursing care, uh, national average is 73%. Westminster Communities of Florida has been at 85%. The overall for the community, um, CCRCs is 80.7% is the national average and Westminster Communities of Florida, 89.4. So these numbers are lower than what we're used to budgeting for in the past. I think that Hank said that in his 30 years, he hasn't budgeted for less than 95% and never budgeted for 85% in the skilled nursing, but it's necessary to do this year. And so the budgets have been based off of, uh, those occupancies this, uh, for this coming year. To reduce, um, turnover, uh, I have mentioned before that our new CEO introduced us to an organization by the name of DRIVE. And they do culture assessments in workplaces. And DRIVE conducted culture assessments in all of our workplaces in Westminster Communities of Florida, including, um, the corporate office. And so they have given us that information back. Uh, they've been working with the, um, senior leadership in Orlando and senior leadership is now getting ready to have, uh, conversations with the leadership teams of each of the communities in regards to our plan to improve our cultures and make us a great place to work for, um, uh, the people that work here and the people that will come to work with us in the future. So implementing this action plan is going to be a big part of our, um, success in minimizing our turnover as we go forward. Uh, effective communication and timely communication is something that we got from our specific re, uh, results, uh, that we, um, will be focusing on. We are also focusing on improving our retention in the first year of employment. And I'm going to show you a couple of graphs in a moment, but we are experiencing more turnover with people that are being hired, uh, and not achieving their anniversary of their first year than any other segment of our, um, of our tenure. So we're going to be focusing on successful onboarding of new, new employees and also conducting stay interviews. So there's a lot of good, best practices, uh, for successfully onboarding people and we'll be implementing those. There's a couple of graphs here. This first slide shows what our turnover has been for the last, uh, two years. So this left graph is for 2019 and the right graph is for 2020. And this kind of shows that, um, turnover is, is not a new challenge for us. Um, we started out the year in 2019 at 36%. Uh, by the end of the year, we got down, we, we went up a little bit and then we got down to 34% in the fourth quarter of 2019. Uh, in 2020, we started off the year at 42%. It went down a little bit and then it rose up to 46% uh, by the end of the year 2020. So when we compare that to our retention, um, we see that in 2019, our retention rate was 71, almost 72% at the beginning of 2019, but it had dropped down to 64% by the end of 2019. Uh, in 2020, we started out at 66% and ended the year at 71%. So this kind of goes to support that, um, we are retaining people. Uh, there is a different number count and that, we'll talk about that in a minute too and, and the amount of employees may be influencing these graphs a little bit, but, um, as we talk about the, uh, number of employees at the end of 2019 and the end of 2020, uh, I wanted to, uh, share a few things with you. Uh, where you saw that there was an increase in the first quarter of 2020, that was influenced, uh, by our therapists. Um, in the beginning of, of last year, there was a number of on-call therapists. There was seven on-call therapists that we didn't need anymore because of demand. There was a part-time speech therapist that transferred to WSA and then there was also a full-time, uh, physical therapist that was not needed because of the amount of physical therapists that we had on the campus as well as the demand. And, um, so those were, uh, some positions that were, um, released that, uh, had an impact on the increase in the first quarter of 2020. Uh, later in the year, uh, we made the decision to contract out the security services. So that's two part-time and two full-time, uh, security people less that we didn't have because we are now contracting out with Secure America. Nursing services were, is, there's, uh, it's, it's fairly normal to have a constant turnover. Uh, we want to keep that turnover as low as possible, but we generally have 10-plus openings in nursing and we're always recruiting for those positions and hiring new people to fill those positions. I can tell you that dining services and housekeeping have both increased their employee counts since December of 2020. The, I get a lot of questions about what, you know, are, are we recruiting for positions now? And we are currently recruiting for nursing, dining, resident services and maintenance positions on our campus. And there's already some people that have accepted positions that we're expecting in early to mid-February. Uh, the resident assisted, residential assisted living coordinator is going to be joining us in February as well as a dining tech and two CNAs. And we are actively interviewing other people and we expect to have those, those positions filled in February as well. And we'll continue to introduce them to you through 266 so you can get a sense of how many people, uh, are being hired on a monthly basis. And, um, we're going to be trying to close the back door. As a part of the, um, onboarding of a new health services administrator, Elizabeth and I just finished meeting with each one of the shifts and we've been going and we've been talking to the different shifts. And we're just as concerned as you are about the appearance of a revolving door of people that are coming to work with us in nursing and, um, the majority, the overwhelming majority of the people that are leaving within their first year are nursing employees. So all the other departments, if you look at the turnover from 2019 to 2020, it's pretty much consistent. It's just the nursing where we're seeing this higher number of turnover right now. And I'm happy to say that as we've been meeting with the nursing staff, they, they are working, uh, under unfortunate circumstances because of openings and agency. Uh, they're telling us that when an agency person is working, that they're keeping an eye on that assignment as well as their own. I mean, our people are just so committed to the care that they are providing here. It's very, uh, refreshing and reassuring and admirable for how committed they are. They aren't telling us big concerns that they have. There's some minor frustrations that we were going to be able to work out with them. And they're very happy with Elizabeth coming around and meeting with them and they're encouraged by what they're hearing and seeing, uh, by Elizabeth's leadership. So we're, um, we're not, uh, at a point where we think that this is a sinking ship or anything to that effect, uh, and we are in, under, have it under control and, and moving forward. We want to also improve resident satisfaction. And the main thing that I've been hearing over the, almost a year that I've been here is that, um, people don't know where to go to get services. So our first commitment to you is to make it known or better, better known as to how to obtain services on campus. And one of the things that we've already started doing is updating the resident handbook and the appendix. Uh, that's a baseline foundation document that really tells people what to expect, where they can go for different things. Uh, you heard earlier about the, uh, emergency medical information that the health services committee has put together. We're partnering with them on that information so that that is widely adopted, uh, by our campus and supported by our community and administration. And then also the commitment to effective communication and making sure that we are making people aware, because as I talk with people about this, it's understandable to think that people could live here for many, many years, not have any issues, not have to worry about where to go for certain things, and then they get to a point and they're not sure where they're supposed to go. So we need to be communicating for those that may be, um, at a point of transition or needing more support, uh, not just the people that are moving into our campus. And we are committed to providing that information to you. The other thing that we're focusing on is our Quality of Life Action Plan. Last year, we did the Quality of Life Two Action, uh, Survey and I have a little bit of information here to share with you as well and we'll be diving into this information deeper as, as we establish this action plan. Most of the Westminster Communities of Florida communities saw decreases in their scores in 2020 compared to 2018. The Equality of Life Survey Two is done every other year. Uh, Quality of Life Survey One is done on the, uh, other. So in independent living, we ranked three among the third among the Westminster Communities of Florida and we ranked eighth among the assisted living, uh, communities within our organization. These numbers are consistent with where we ranked in 2018. Our score in 2020 was 3.46. That is down from 3.58 in 2018. In residential assisted living, our score was 3.25. That's down from 3.39. As we look at the, um, departments, we notice that there's three departments here that scored the best in the whole company. And those departments are dining, housekeeping and wellness. They got the highest scores amongst all the communities in their departments for the company. We also see that our highest score on our campus was transportation at 3.75, but that wasn't the highest score amongst the transportation departments in the, in the company. And pharmacy was our lowest score in independent living and we really don't have many residents that are getting the pharmacy services, um, from Westminster Pharmacy here on our campus. Uh, so I have talked to Dominic and he does want to come out and speak with you. He wants to provide a letter on how they can provide services for you and we'll see if that's something that, uh, you all want to do as we move forward. In assisted living, all of our departments were lower than, uh, they were in the previous years. And, um, the lowest departments were security, maintenance, pharmacy and dining. We didn't have any departments that were the best in the company. We were pretty much middle of the road in assisted living. Um, but I was interested to see that these results were, well, they're lower than last time, but they're still consistent with the rankings within the organization. So we'll be, uh, talking with the assisted living council and the residents over there to get a better understanding, looking at the comments that are provided, uh, drilling into the questions to figure out what we can do to improve these services. I'm a little surprised that pharmacy services would be a concern in assisted living as well, but residents in assisted living do have an option. They can use our local pharmacy here in, in, uh, St. John's County or they can use the Westminster Pharmacy and maybe that represents that they've chosen to use the pharmacy, uh, here locally. But, uh, a lot of these results are probably directly related to the pandemic, um, but, um, both security and dining represented that those were lower, lowest scores that they received in the past. And as I close, um, there's a couple of miscellaneous things. Uh, we do have the rate increase letters that are going to be coming out and being mailed, uh, this Friday. And we are wrapping up the Advolorum affidavits. Uh, they are due back on the February the 12th and the last time that we have a But a lot of these results are probably directly related to the pandemic. But both security and dining represented that those were lower, lowest scores that they received in the past. And as I close, there's a couple of miscellaneous things. We do have the rate increase letters that are going to be coming out and being mailed this Friday. And we are wrapping up the Ad Valorem affidavits. They are due back on the February the 12th. And the last time that we have a scheduled time to do the notarization of those affidavits is on February the 10th. We are getting a number of people that are turning their affidavits in without a notary. So we just want to reinforce that we do need to get all affidavits back, even if you don't qualify, and they all have to be notarized. I can take any questions that you all have.
I have one question relating to the staffing issues. Is Westminster Communities looking at their rate, wage rate scales? Competition is higher now than I think it's ever been. And my question, having done this for many, many years, is are we actually paying our people competitively with what they can get paid to work across the street?
That's a good question, Ramsey. Our organization does do rate analysis twice a year. We have been hearing recent information about our competition increasing their rates. As we talk to the staff, the number-one reason that they leave is because they can get more money somewhere else, whether they perceive that there's more COVID compensation, you know, being provided. And so we've asked to see if we could get another rate analysis done, and we've provided some of the information that we've heard. And we're actively working on this. And our new CEO has challenged us to be creative in resolving staffing and occupancy issues. So we're looking forward to doing that. Any other questions?
Are you open to any questions?
Yes.
Do it.
I can hold it.
Okay. Do we have anybody here from the Health Center?
We do. Would you like, do you have a question?
Well, yeah. In other words, by the way, we have met. I'm Tom Roseman. I live in apartment C3, but my wife is in the Health Center after a little over three years. So what concerns me is that twice recently, I've got these letters that you put out saying that somebody, an employee in the Health Center, tested positive. And I don't understand how that can be, because what I read in the past is the employees are checked every morning. When they come in, they change clothes, and they put on the suit that they need, the garment they need, to go up there and work with the folks. So I don't, in this case, I was told last week that I can't visit my wife until February the 2nd because she's quarantined. Now, she's bedridden, so that means that somebody on the staff had to come into her room and expose her, and they were tested positive. So that's my question. Has things got kind, this has gone on for some time. Have things got kind of loose on how these folks that work in the Health Center, the nurses and aides, when they check in every morning?
Thank you, Mr. Roseman, for your question. We are screening everybody to identify any symptoms that people are having. But as we've heard on the news, so many people end up contracting this virus without any signs or symptoms whatsoever. So the great news is, is that we're testing our employees twice a week because St. John's County is above 10% positivity rate. And as a result of us testing twice a week, we end up identifying those people that might have the virus and not have any symptoms. And they are told not to come to work. We communicate with the Department of Health, but we do a exposure management tool. And what we do with that is we determine if some, who that person came into close contact with and who that person came into casual contact with. We're not as concerned about the casual contact, but we are concerned about the close contact. So the person that tested positive is probably your wife's primary caregiver and came into close contact. And we're trying to make sure that your wife, if she has the virus, you know, doesn't give it to anybody else. The great news is, is that we have not had our employees resulting in resident positive cases because of the procedures that we've put in place with the N95s, with the gowns in the past, and just the universal precautions of washing hands and everything that we've been reinforcing. So we've been very successful. We've still only had two, max three, residents in the Health Center. They've all been from a while ago, and then the most recent one was someone that was admitted and tested positive right after he was admitted. But we have not had much COVID in the Health Center. But we have had caregivers, you know, outside caregivers that have tested positive, but fortunately have not transmitted the disease to other residents in our Health Center. Does that answer your question? Elizabeth, anything you would add? Okay. Do we have a question on Zoom?
Brian, we normally filing income tax have a figure that tells us how much we can deduct from our fees for healthcare. When are we going to get that figure?
I've been told that that letter is provided around the middle of February, within the first couple of weeks of February.
Why does it, not usually, we have it, time to prepare our taxes.
I'm just communicating what I've been told from the past. I think that the emphasis right now is on the other letters that are coming out the end of this week and then the other, but I'm sure there's a lot of work that goes into that calculation. But it comes out after February, from what I understand. If I get it this week, I'll be sure to let you know. Any other questions? Ann?
I just wanted to thank you for everything that was done to get us vaccinated early on. I appreciate that. I'm happy to be here where I feel as safe as I could anywhere. Some of you know, right before I arrived, I should have died three times. And so my health is very important to me, but not only my health, but I am concerned about everybody here. So I appreciate everything that's been done to keep us safe. I have a couple of suggestions I'd like to propose.
Sure.
The first thing is a reminder, and I like to echo, 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 echo Dr. Wayne's comments on the masks. Ironically, in the time that I've sat here for the meeting, I've seen six people go by without masks or under their chin. And I know from time to time, I'm probably not the only one that gets lax and forgets things from time to time. Could we make another, like you have in the past, reminder about masks, that it is very important? Per CDC, those droplets that spread the virus do remain in the air indoors up to hours, and that it's important that even though nobody sneezed or coughed, and they're still not in the room, those droplets could still remain for somebody else. And so it's important that we remember, for our own sake and everybody else's especially, to wear our mask and to also have them over the nose, not just down there. So that's the first thing I'd like to propose, another little reminder, if that's possible.
I think that that's a great point, and I've entertained a lot of questions, you know, around the vaccine, and when are we going to be able to stop masking, and when are we going to be able to do this, and why are people testing positive if they've been vaccinated? And Mr. Letizzi, Dr. Letizzi, you know, shared, you know, it's not until a few weeks after the second dose that the full efficacy of the vaccine takes place. So, and it's still experimental. We're still learning. I don't know that we know that, know that, but we know it as best we can at this point. So, yes.
And with it mutating and new strains and the fact that it's not 100% either, I think that's really important for us, so.
Right.
The second thing is about taking temperatures. When we come in the gate, I know a lot of times, if we're residents, they just thumbs up, you're good to go. I really would like to suggest that everybody gets their temperatures taken. I know it's an inconvenience, and some people might be opposed to having to stop for a few minutes, you know, to get that done. But as you said before, there is a period of time where people are asymptomatic, and yet they could be infecting people. And somebody, even if we've lived here a long time, might come in the gate, not know we're sick, have it, and the temperature might be an indication that could prevent it being spread. So I would just like to propose that that's a standard procedure consistently that we get when we come in the gate, everybody.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And the good thing, I would like to have something written about the guidelines for safety on campus, because a lot of times visual sticks with us more than just auditory, and referencing wearing masks, how critical that is. Secondly, visitors are not to be in the building in common spaces where the rest of us are going to be. There is no smoking on campus. All three of those happened in our building in Camellia last week. We had a person come in, they were wandering the halls, and they shouldn't really have been in the apartment. They had no masks on, and they were smoking outside our laundry room. So I'm wondering, how do people that come on campus, vendors, people that are having guests, the guests themselves, how do they know that this is what is expected of them when they're on our campus to keep us safe? Not only residents, but the staff and everybody, other visitors? So do you think that that's something that could be handed out as they come in so that they know? Because obviously, I don't know if these people knew and didn't care, but I have a feeling they didn't know. Could we make it clear what's expected?
Yeah. There's a number of different groups that are coming on the campus. Everybody that's an essential caregiver, a family member who's been qualified as an essential caregiver, has agreed to the parameters of being inside. We aren't scrutinizing people that are just dropping off groceries or picking up somebody or dropping somebody off as much. So I guess there's always going to be some opportunity for someone to stretch the boundaries. And we hope that that's not the case. I think that the overwhelming responsibility of visitors knowing what to do when they come on the campus is from the independent living resident that they're visiting. And I can see what we might be able to do to help supplement that. I don't know that I can assure that that would be consistently communicated at the gate, but we could, we could look into it.
As, as they're being checked in, you know, just to hand them that, just so that they know, because it's all about communication. And if they don't know, we really can't expect them or fault them for not. But I think the residents maybe don't realize, or maybe need a reminder, but certainly people coming on for the first time need to be brought up to speed with how safe you keep us here.
Okay.
And so again, I just thank you. Thank you for making this the place to be. I am happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank all of you, because we wouldn't have the results that we have here without all of us working together on this. We're all in this together. It's been evident by how positive our experience has been over the last nine, 10 months. And I appreciate your recommendations, and we'll see what we can do about that. Other questions?
If we have nothing else for Brian or any other...
Excuse me, darling.
Hi, Elizabeth. I didn't see you standing over there.
That's because I'm, that's because I'm so short, sorry. Just as something I'd like people also to consider, going back, I do have a problem with this microphone. I do this regularly. I am very sorry. Going back to what Ann said about masks, and knowing that this is spread via aerosol, I would really like some people to consider the efficacy of a face shield as opposed to a mask, because those droplets, if you do sneeze, they're going to go forward, but they're also going to come under, and then they're going to spread. So please just consider that. Thank you. I got it.
If there is nothing else, the meeting is adjourned.